I'd like to welcome everyone here today. Thank you for being with us. We've got Mr. Mayor Williams from the city of Hartsville. We have Mayor Williams, Jennifer and Joy Allen, Paul O'Callaghan. We've got a lot of our staff in the city. We have the mayor here with us. We have our school superintendent just walking through. Welcome.
You're the chairman, finance director.
At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. And in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all these media and persons requesting information. If everyone would please join me in the pledge of allegiance. And we will have our invocation by Councilor Allen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this thing and thank you for our time coming together as individuals throughout our community to make best decisions for our county. And Father, we pray that you grant us wisdom and guidance as we move with these transportation issues. And you guide us in the right direction. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval of our agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve our agenda.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And your motion carries. A workshop on ordinance zero dash zero two four dash one six, a levy to impose a 1% sales tax use and use subject to the referendum within Jasper County pursuant to section four dash three seven dash three zero of the Court of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended to define the specific purposes of designated projects for which the proceeds of the tax may be used to provide the minimum time for which such tax may be imposed, to provide the estimated cost of the projects from the proceeds of the tax, to provide a, for a countywide referendum on the imposition of the sales tax and use tax and issuance of general obligation bonds and to prescribe contents of valid questions in the referendum to provide for the conduct of the referendum by the board of voter registration and election of Jasper County, to provide for the administration of tax if approved, to provide for the payment of the tax if approved, and to provide for other matters related thereto. And at this time, that is the draft ordinance, the same one that we discussed. And County Council's Secretary, I'll remind you that the ordinance that's scheduled has some red changes in it, some red language. The two changes that we made, one incorporated a committee to the process. And then the second change was specifically regarding valid language that defines green belt portion. So that's the ordinance. And then the other handouts, you have, you have three items. You have a matrix which shows the growth rates, projections, different growth rate percentages, and yield that we've come upon choosing those. A second page you have is a spreadsheet that was created by Mayor Williams. And that is the list of priority projects that you can review with us. And then the third sheet is a spreadsheet that's a status update on the existing 2016 tax reduction sales tax of those projects, any projects there, starting with different projects that have been in them over the years. And that's the status of those. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure where you want to proceed, but I want to just throw this out there. If everybody wants to write these items down, these are the items that I think we need to work towards. And I put them in the order that I think you might want to do it. But you're doing a different one. Okay? The first one is the yield. You're going to pick a growth rate that everybody feels comfortable with. Pick total number that you're thinking that you would collect. Now, that means the second item you have to pick is the term, right? We currently have in the draft ordinance a $470 million number and a term of 15 years. But the sky's the limit. It's your policy direction. You can pick whatever you want today. Then the next item I think that you would need to decide would be the split, the percentage split between road projects and green belt. Currently in the draft ordinance, it is 8% for road projects, 20% for green belt. Then you may want to have a discussion about the ability to bottom and what that amount you're comfortable with, if anything. And that would necessarily change the valid language. Currently, the draft ordinance is established at $290 million, which was provided by our financial advisor. And then finally, the projects, the road projects themselves. You can have all of them listed. We have Jennifer Bryant here in the audience today. She was instrumental in helping us determine those priorities over the last two years because we were looking at impact fees. And so it's a road list that's been pared as well that everybody agrees to. She came up with the estimates. So she's here if you have any questions about this. But that would be the final task, I would think, is you pick the projects. If you want it to match the dollar amount you're shooting for, you can do that. If you want it to be greater than, you can do that as well. It provides some flexibility. Mr. Chairman, is that sufficient to start the ball rolling?
That's a lot.
Okay? We all want to start with the matrix. And you know, if you lead us and you guide us through it, we'll take it step by step. Again, we started with a number of $470 million, and that was based on a 12 and 1/2% growth rate. The, the Department of Fiscal Affairs Office is the office who checked this initially, which is always conservative. And you asked how it would be through the yield 15 years next. And they said a total of $227 million over 15 years. Now, I'll tell you, there's no particular science to this. It's whatever you feel comfortable with. The only fear that you would have is the dollar amount being stickered off to the voters, right? But if you pick low, as we did in 2016, then in the life of the program, maybe shorter than you want it to be. If you pick high, it makes up for that sticker shop percent now. But mind you, and McGee and my hand is on their way. She's done all this in promo polling behind the scenes. When she did the polling initially, she did it at the $470 million range. And I believe she used a $300,000 bond to unbroker. So that's where all the reactions came from. She has offered, obviously, in that period of charge. Once she finishes today and we all have agreement on what she wanted to do, she will re-poll. See how it's going. So I think that's the first task, is to look at the matrix. You all discuss it amongst yourselves. Pick a number that you feel comfortable with based on the growth rate. Can't go wrong. I jokingly said to the mayor, if he gets buckies in here two years from now, it could blow the whole thing out of the water. So you just don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Or just to clarify, what this tells us. State law says whatever, if we go out with $470, 15, whatever comes first, it makes the expires. So if we get $470 in 10 years, it expires in 10 years. If we get only $400 in 15 years, it expires. It's the 15 year mark.
Yes, sir.
That's, am I correct in that?
Yes, sir. Whichever comes first. Whichever comes first.
So the $470 over 15 years for road projects, what is that total number of road projects I see? This list?
It's well over $700 million, Mr. Chairman. It's all of our road projects on there. And there are two ways you can do it. You can narrow that down to match the number that you're going for with the $470 or the other number that you choose. Or you can keep it large. Pros and cons of doing both. The cons are people don't understand that you're, where are you going to get the rest of the money to do the projects? The pros are you've got all the projects to pick from. So you pick whichever one you want.
I know, 462, those begin sometimes seemingly to be completed by November for the last correspondence I had from near Cooler Store to right around Snake Road. So I don't know if that would be on, need to be on this list or not. Plus, next year is 278 from near Tom Taylor Crossroads up to Graves Highway, which is like almost less than seven miles. So do those need to be on this list? If the state's already appropriated?
No, so they don't have to be. And that's, that's the hard part, guessing what's going to be on there. I'll give you a great example.
Let me ask you this. If we leave these projects on the list?
Yes.
And are we bound to keep on the list if 462 and 278 are completed as scheduled? We're not committed to keep those two projects on this list if they're left on. Take them off and use those dollars for other roads.
Let's pray, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification then, we are not committed to these expenditures based on the collection. Money can't be shifted around during the life of the project. Those are possible projects. Whatever you spend will have to be on the list, but you're not required to spend everything on it. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other roads or any acting limits added, concerns that may not be?
Mr. Chairman, that may be a good way to go at it. You start to pick priorities from each jurisdiction and then add the numbers up and see where you are.
I just have a suggestion, and I don't know if it's legal or not. But we have a large problem with these HOA that we're supposed to have up in the northern part of the county where Van Roads, we can't get in with the ambulances. Is there a possibility that we could put a million dollars into this and just have grant situation going on?
Mr. Chairman?
That's a legal question I'm asking.
We can't spend public money on private roads. We would have to obtain an easement or right of way, a dedication of some sort to the county and undertake the responsibility for it. Beaufort County attempted, Richland County attempted to do this over the last decade or so and have been rebuffed several times.
How can Elco and all the other locations spend their money, which is public money, on putting in roofs and all that?
Those are probably, and I'm speaking just from assumption, those are probably special grant programs funded by federal money that have particular expenditure provisions on them. It's, the most recent case that came up, you may recall about six years ago, maybe seven years ago, Columbia to Florence and the PD flooded as a hurricane. Several counties wanted to try and go back and fix it. The roads, the entranceways, the private drives are getting because they all washed away. And the Attorney General, in a very strong opinion, said that was unconstitutional. As bad as it was, even with a federal declaration of an emergency in that area, the money could not be spent by the counties to fix up private drives.
Mr. Kim, I think you'd have to have control of it to spend public money on it. So you would have to condemn it or take it over or agree to improve it. I will tell you, there is one project that I know of. Maybe you could help me if there are others. But that is a private road that is currently on your list, and that's at the bottom of page four. That is the New River Parkway, US 278 to Argent Boulevard. We all know that little cut through there by Palmetto Electric. There is $11 million slated in there for potential of widening that road. That would involve, we'd have to get control of the road in order to do it.
Would that be the New River Parkway? Isn't that if the light's going in? Isn't the state going to take that over?
Not that, they won't take over the road, but that is where the light is slated to go, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I would suggest to us all following to what Mr. Paul was saying, our first overview picture is, you know, what total do we think the voters will accept without, you know, having an ask or a comment? What will they accept? Because you pick any one of these numbers. Take a 5% increase, it's only $230,000. That's not that many. But, so we need to decide that. Because we have to present what the customer and voters will accept. So that's one issue. The other thing that we said we wanted to present in this list, which I think is important, whatever number we choose to go out to the voters, the project list should match that number. And that's number two. And number three, the project list should benefit everyone in the county. You can't put all the money in Hartsville. You can't put all the money in Ridgeland. You can't put it all. If we want to, if we want the voters to accept this, everybody has to benefit. Every part of the county should benefit. So when I proposed this list, what I tried to do without knowing what's important to the North or what's important to Richland, I tried to make sure that every part of the county benefited from this tax. So those are the top level things that I think we as, you as a county should consider.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can, you know what the mayor said, picking the number is important, but you also need to have a discussion about the percentage to the conservation community. Previously, the county council had committed to 20%. And Mr. Mayor, I think that your suggestions proposal reduced the percentage.
To about, to about 13%. It was kind of a backed in number so you could get the $470. You know, so, and it came out to $63 million, which is, I think, if I remember the calculation, was somewhere around 13%. And again, that, I'm thinking about what will the voters accept in terms of, what do they want to see? I think everybody wants to see preservation of green space. And that's important. But I think everybody's first objective, and it is the transportation task, is to make sure that the projects are done. So how do we, I just backed into the number to make it match.
Is the 20% in addition to the $470?
No, sir. It's all the $470.
Part of the $470?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. And $94 million is 20% of the $470.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On my question, and 46170, 315. Now, because I know 170 is a bad shape. Then I see that it dropped down. Mr. Mayor, you said 17Y, 315 to 170. So what do we, what are our plans for 170?
The, which, what's the dollar amount here?
$30 and $20.
Those are in millions.
In millions, yeah.
If you remember, the 17Y name, you're talking about 315 to 170.
Right. So that's the gap between the current project that's under construction and the part that's already widened now. So it still goes back to that two lane?
Section in front of Riverport, it's a two lane.
So that would be that section of widening. And now your comment specifically to address the condition of SC 170, that's not included in the original impact fee. That would go back to, does it really need to be widened and added as a project to be widened? Or is it basically a pavement reconstruction because it's falling apart?
Yeah. Pavement reconstruction is definitely falling apart.
Yes, ma'am. So the projects on the list here, so the, the 315, the, let's see here, 4617315 intersection, that's where you've got, on SC 46, if you're traveling towards Savannah, you immediately got the 46 intersection turning off right. You get down, then SC 170 turns off right, then 315 continues straight. So you've got two back-to-back intersections with a lot of stuff going on now. And it was more to see if there was a solution versus what is there today as far as the intersection. So that's what is in. But there was not a specific project originally as part of the impact fees to do any improvements to SC 170.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, on 170, there's a project in here for 70 million, I think.
So the 1, oh, and I apologize. So the 170 is part of the triangle. It's the, it's the one from 462 to 278.
And that assumes, that's our portion of the project? And then Beaufort County has their portion of the project? Is that right?
I believe that is correct, yes. Because it's, y'all look based on the, the rec.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. As we look down through these, are we doing this for safety or are we doing this for convenience? Because these improvements that go, do we have accident data on these? That would help prioritize where we're going to be. I'm looking at it from a consumer standpoint, not from a policymaker right now. I would prioritize these areas that are the most dangerous. We all drive them. My family drives them. I would like every place in the county to be safe, but I would like to look at the roads that need these improvements safety-wise first. I mean, do we have any accident data on any of these projects?
We did not pull the accident data on these projects. This was developed based upon coordination with both municipalities and the county looking at where, where is everyone driving? Where do we have known capacity issues? When you look at it, you see like road widening slash access management, access management, and also looking at the safety aspect of maybe not a true traditional five lane with a pavementing everywhere, actually dedicating places for the left turns or U-turns. Then on some of these with the intersections, knowing, like I just mentioned, the SC 46, SC 170, 315, it's kind of confusing in there now, traffic is growing. So the, some of the readily available data was actually looking at some of the traffic counts, like SC 462 coming off of 170 up to Lake Snake. We know that 460, I did look at the traffic down on 462. So basically, 462 up to 336 coming in Richland. You've got over 10,000 plus cars a day traveling that section. 336 up to 95, there's a split. Now, I've looked at it for a different project here recently, and the reporting numbers from 336 up to 95 in one year jumped over 2,000 ADT. So everybody's GPS is directing them to use alternate corridors when things are getting backed up. Part of this too was looking at connectivity. Where are people wanting to travel? Because so many neighborhoods are gated. So you're only bound by a few roads. But that's why in the Hartville area, that new Riverside connection, right now it's a private road. People are using for public use. And you take it over public and improve it and make another connection, then you get more people potentially using it versus jumping on the 278.
Most people that I talk to that have heard of this, they're, they're more concerned about their safety on the road than their convenience of getting to a place in a short period of time. And my, my thought is, is that to present this to the public, we have to put a safety thing in there. These are the intersections we know are bad. These are the highways that we, that we need to, need the, the one first. That's just my thought.
Well, and there could be, maybe, I think we've discussed maybe some possible buckets.
Yes. A way you could address that is this is built in to, to have a committee. And Mr. Amkin and Mayor Williams suggested a very small committee, which made me stop. Of the three people, one from each jurisdiction. And we get together annually and do that. They would review the income stream. They would make recommendations to the county council about bombing or not bombing. And they would do that prioritization. So I think that, that you could have that screening for you. And they would have to justify why they chose the priority to choose. I think that might cover. Is it worth it? Thank you.
And then, if I can tag back in on the safety. So Elco went out for Safe Streets for All Brink, that contains four counties, Jasper, Beaufort, and Hamilton. That's in progress now. So they are also developing a list of projects looking at various corridors input from the county and both the municipalities as well as the accident history to come up with various recommendations.
Okay, thank you. You may, you may also find yourself in a situation where you have Beaufort County being ready to do a project that you're a partner in, and that would necessarily elevate that project at the beginning because you have a bargaining interest.
Just on, excuse me, Chairman. Just on, when we put these lists together, we prioritize, and say something comes up in the future that the state gives it to us and we have this bucket of money, and if something else comes up, is there an ability to change everything?
Yes, sir. There is.
And that's what, that's what we're afraid of. It's all this development's going on. And we may think now, but five years, 10 years, maybe something entirely different, like the port coming in maybe?
Yes, sir. That's, that's exactly what happened in the last effort. One of the major projects that the council wanted to work on was resurfacing Route 321 as the whole genesis for Starion Program. And as soon as the ordinance passed, the DMT said they were going to do that. So council had to shift and pick up the project. So you can do that by just adopting another ordinance to adjust them. Do you have any?
Actually, Jennifer, I think you kind of brought it. We, we were kind of working on, and some of the safety concerns. And, you know, it actually, oddly enough, some of the areas that have highest accident counts are some of the least traveled roads. So it doesn't necessarily correlate that you have high traffic and high accident rates. So just one more question.
Dr. Anderson, did you have any comments or anything you'd like to share with us?
The only thing that I do want to insert and thank you for that.
I'll answer.
I, I do believe that the safety component is certainly a valid component. And when I think about that, we're thinking about from a standpoint of our buses trackway and where they can turn, et cetera. And some of the holdups that certainly we have experienced at the school system with trying to start the transition business. And so I am certainly happy to hear that there would be a proposed committee. I would like to ask, I know that keeping it's certainly small, with three individuals. But I would like to consider that the school district does have a seat on that committee to look at that as well as we are proposing areas of growth throughout the county, et cetera. And just having some input with the culture because transportation for us is not an option. It's something that we must provide.
Now, I want to add something, Mr. Smith. Perhaps that's a good idea, that the school would have a seat in that, and keep it an odd number. Ms. Corsi suggested, remember the public. So instead of three, be five. And we have every, every segment represented. Just an idea.
How would you choose the public? Father? How would you choose the public? So you've got three, you've got three.
I'm just saying, that's why, that's why when we had this committee, it was one from the.
This is a suggestion that was published to me last night. And given Dr. Anderson's suggestion, that's why I thought it was, it's just something to consider. And of our point, how do you choose that number?
We could probably be after it. We would have to put that to a frank statement. I don't know you.
If we put a member of the public on this committee, how would we choose? And would we have to put it in the referendum? How would we choose that person?
I think you would. If it, the way, the reason, I think Mr. Teller took a stab at it, and it was, worked with our bond counsel on the language. The way it is, it's fine, so we have to run it by him. I'm not sure how we do that. I mean, the other way, we envisioned is, maybe you didn't, you two gentlemen didn't, but what I envisioned is, you come together once a year, three or four, right, of the entities, and everybody would be there. I mean, we would have the chief there, we would have the transportation committee there, we would have DOT there, and so you'd have plenty of room to ask for public opinion and vet things before you establish your priorities. That's just the way I saw it, in my head.
That's where it's open, hopefully it's open to public participation as well as the school.
Yes, sir. Because I don't know for 15 years how you maintain a person, it's not a position or a representative. We can do it.
So just making an open meeting, it's not a closed, three-person meeting?
No, I think you can open it. That would be the way to do it. And then, it's envisioned, I believe it's written, so that that committee comes up with the priorities. And then, that committee goes to each of the jurisdictions and presents the priorities and reasoning behind the decisions. So everybody at least gets an annual review of what the projects are, how much money you've spent, how much money you collect.
Just to confirm, these are public meetings because it's a publicly-created committee? So for you, all those other good things apply.
And that committee doesn't have, has the ability to create another committee?
I'm sorry, sir.
Create a committee that will look into things. They could create, if we could say, three or four people, they would want to be part of the committee, not in voting, but just to be a part of it as a committee.
I think you could invite whatever kind of interest you want.
I mean, that's, it's not, I don't think it should be determined here as much as later on. Keep it simple. I'm just trying to, the more complicated you get the referendum, the worse it looks.
The way it is written, it is the chairperson and two mayors. You can't have a suggestion that it be perhaps those individuals for their representative. You want to figure out how creative you want to get with that, or you want to keep it among the elected officials. It's a little odd if the city appoints citizens and the town doesn't, you know, whatever. Plenty of variations you can get to there.
Well, my suggestion was for representative rather than, say, mayor or someone like that, because we're telling the municipalities what to do, rather than just let them decide what they want. It could be the mayor, for all I care. It's just that let them decide. That was my reason.
Town, city, what are your thoughts on that?
We actually wanted to appoint an engineer.
Okay, that, just anybody, resident or employee?
It would be a veteran.
Okay. What's your pleasure? You want every, I mean, I govern in the, at the point of.
Both municipalities and the county are going to be pretending their committee's information. I mean, I'm certainly fine with appointing somebody from the county, if the municipalities are as well, and, yes, the community more involved, I think, so I think, and we'll see the information as bodies to make decisions on, you know, the authority, let's think what they think is important.
And I think it could be an elected official.
You think it should be an elected official?
Because we're more to the people, and the engineer can come and give us advice or whatever it is, but it's up to us to sell them, sell product.
We're getting anywhere close. I think if we just took the line, you represent, you two jurisdictions, three jurisdictions, and let each jurisdiction decide who they want to come in. If Rizum wants to send an engineer, Aricola wants to send a mayor, county council wants to send this partner, it should be their choice.
And if the chairman can send us to that school district into that mix?
Yeah. He's the great answer, about the school district.
Will you make it to that?
Yeah, I just, not trying to hijack anything, but talking about, would it not be simpler just to have the two mayors and the chairman, or their designee, elected official designee, attend these committees? So you've got an ex officio, and you've got, you're funneling yourself into a, an official thing, and you can, you know, whether you do it unilaterally, not, I tell you, with consultation with the rest of your council, who's that designee is, that's up to the individual jurisdiction to do.
And then if we add a school, is it, should Dr. Anderson, school board member, or should it be superintendent and her designee?
It's possibly, I think it should be, if you're going to do it like with officials, it should be a school board member. And if they certainly want to bring, if it's a public meeting, I can certainly attend either or, or someone that I designate. So that won't affect that.
Dave, would you go with that? You got it?
I've got enough to wordsmith a little bit better.
Hey, we got the number here? So, I guess looking at the, test the term with the 15-year, 107 million, and 12.5% growth rate, is that? That's where you are. Are you comfortable with the number, or are you not comfortable with the number? Are you comfortable with 15 years, or are you not comfortable with that term?
I'm comfortable with it because if we pay it off, you know, you get that amount. First, the street level, what comes first? So I wouldn't spend a whole lot of time setting that up.
I think the message, I think Mr. Fulmer, as we're elected politicians, we understand that there could be sticker shots. So what's the number, if those are recommendations, those are the voters? I think, as Mr. Commissioner said, what's important is to make sure that the project list, everybody, educate the public that everybody's going to benefit from this. Sun City's going to vote if Archon Boulevard's state of care. Rizum is going to vote for Rizum's state of care. We vote, take care, if you put that on the list and make sure they understand it, we'll get their votes. And that's what we, I think we need to do, even at the risk of sticker shots. I'm personally uncomfortable with the 470, 15-year term. I just think, whatever the number is, it should match the project list.
All right, that's where we are, Mr. Chairman. If the 470, if everyone's in agreement with that, with 15 years, do you want your projects to tally up to that, or do you not?
What was the downside if it doesn't tally up to that?
Downside is, if you have a project on there, and lo and behold, you get a big grant, and you don't have that project to do anymore, and you've got leftover money, you have to go back and pass another ordinance to allocate those leftover funds. That's the only negative I see of having the road list tidy and meeting the yield.
Or could we allocate that money to the additional 20% that we already approved for Rizum?
Probably have to be an ordinance.
I don't think, once you had a referendum, that you could mess with the mix of the percentages.
I think that's what, that's the issue, is you're setting an expectation of percentages that relate something, so changing that would.
I try, Kate.
Thanks.
Does that sound like an easy plan B if somebody's in the budget in that scenario? It'd be a great problem to have, that you have extra money, somebody paid for a project, you need to reallocate the funds, you have the committee meeting, they decide how to do it, and they advance the work. I don't think that's a big problem.
Negative that I saw, we didn't spoke. We're going to be a lockstep with Beaufort County. Okay, they're going to come out with a $950 million referendum for 10 years. Their project list matches 950. If you come out with, as the original ordinance said, 726 million, but you plan to raise 7470, okay, how do you explain that to 23,000 voters, so they understand? The risk is that people will see it and be confused and not vote for it, because they think you're not going to put their project on the list. And that's the risk. I don't care if we put a billion dollars in, that's personally. But from a political standpoint, and what I think is easy to get across to the voters, is to match them up, just like Beaufort County is. Because if, I go to another recommendation, if we go out with this referendum, whatever we go out with, this should be a regional project with Beaufort County. We should lock arms with Beaufort County and say, this benefits the region. In every part of the region, the two counties benefits from it. And the more benefit to the people, the more likely they'll vote for it. And if we're different than Beaufort County, I think, you know, we have more projects than we have expected. And I think the risk is that we confuse the voters.
Mr. Chairman, and that has been the spirit of this whole thing, is working with Beaufort County to try to leverage their money. The idea is that if this passes and yours passes, then you can start to tackle the triangle, which is insurmountable if you don't have these votes. That you could potentially make another joint infrastructure bank application for some grant funds and show that you're really having a nice coordinated match on project. You could potentially have some great economies of scale, fitting things together, having a design-build team or something like that. So we think that that is tremendous. Maybe we ought to start with that. Maybe we ought to start with projects that potentially could be joined, and list those out. I'm not sure where we start. Or do you want to pick a priority for each jurisdiction and go that way?
You mean, you can bring on the referendum, the first, the most important on the top, and then go down?
Talk about your road list now, let me, I want to be clear. The road list will be in the ordinance. The road list will not be in the mood for people voting, right? It won't be on the act.
There will be, there will be part of what we market and educate.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's where it comes in to educate. The goal of it is to use the public. Mr. Chairman, perhaps, I'd make some American additions, and put some projects out to get to the 470. If you like, and it could explain my rationale, so do it.
Before you do that, ask the question. We don't put, we don't put, we don't put the road, the listing of the roads on the art, right?
No, it goes in the ordinance.
Goes in the ordinance.
The referendum question is very particular and very concise. But there is, in the ordinance, if you look at it, there's a two-page, or two and a half pages of a short description of all the projects.
They're not sequential, they're done based upon what's in the ordinance, correct?
It's, yes. It's based upon the committee making recommendations to the council to make the allocations as the projects mature to the point that they can be funded. I mean, initially, you're going to have engineering, the engineer's going to determine how long it's going to take to get to a point, and maybe something else is out there that takes its priority place at number one, because that's just the way the work comes up. Permitting, wetland permitting. That can, you know, that can, that can change everybody's idea of what's going to happen in a timeframe.
And you may have said this, but when you did these numbers, did you include Beaufort in there, or was it just standalone?
Some of it is standalone, some of it was considering they also had money, yeah. And I'd have to go back and look at all the details for sure, but Beaufort had a representative at some of the meetings early on, talking about some of this.
Okay, so it's standalone, okay.
Gentlemen, that's on page number nine of the ordinance, is the actual ballot questions. Okay. Senator, you can see you can do it.
What happened, Mr.? Very, very, very concerned about us working to get, and we was having a regional meeting, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, what happened to you, I don't know, we didn't, we were having with the, standing by with others?
We still need regionally, we still, and.
Works for Green Belt, too.
Representative for Beaufort County, and every municipality in Jasper, Beaufort, are part of the board and playing the conference. So we are talking all the time from a regional perspective, and Lucas represents, Mr. Kent represents Jasper County, and we were talking all the time about regional issues. I have talked to Chairman Passman, as you have, and we both believe that projects, particularly the triangle, and one of the reasons I took 170 off, that's on their list. You don't need to put 70 million down. That's their list. But we do need to complete the triangle, we need to widen 278 up to where they did, and complete Archon Boulevard, and that would complete the triangle. So that's, that's the rationale, but coming together as a region and saying, this helps the region, because cars go through, they go to work in Hilton, they pass Jasper roads, they pass Beaufort County roads. This is a regional situation, a regional problem, and that's why we need to lock arms.
Mr. Chairman, these are both, they're out of suggestion. You have currently, seven, but going back to your committee, you currently have four members. You could also have Beaufort County, if you'd like, have their chair, have a seat at your chair. Something to think about, something to think about.
We can always send, like, a representative from Beaufort County to be part of the public.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, you have your projects listed here, I think you located one that wasn't on here. Did you have all the projects on here, that you thought?
What I, what I did, this list, it has, what's in the ordinance, yes, 726 million dollars worth of projects, and it's in the left-hand corner.
We found one that was missing, but it's, it's a catch-all, I think it was 20 million dollars.
Yes.
Various related repairs and things for, to be determined, so no worries, but that one's on there.
The, my recommendation adds up to 7, and there were, my rationale, of course you could mix and match, John Smith Road, for example. John Smith Road is going to have a lot of developments.
Yes.
There's going to be road improvements. So that should, A, it should go with the developers of those, the working tracks in South Point. And B, the other problem with John Smith Road, DOT is going to replace that road very soon, and our own will put two lanes. How you widen and then have a bottleneck there, I think, so that's something that needs a lot of thought. I'm giving others, I don't think we have to put money into the board at this time. It's not a priority at this point in time, and, because we don't know where that's headed. Another example, Highway 17 from 278 to John Smith Road, that's 18 million dollars. The only reason we're doing that is for Project 95. Let them pay for it. You know, why should we have taxpayer monies to help a private developer? So that was my rationale. New River Parkway, 11 million dollars. Number one, that's not handling the traffic, and I won't have to go traffic every day. Shouldn't, it's not a priority. And it's private road. Why do we want to take over a private road and then widen it for 11 million dollars? I don't think it's, maybe 10 years down the road, the next referendum is a little bit, I'm thinking it's a priority. So that, that was kind of my thought process, the reasons it took off, because I thought the local developers should be participating, and some, you know, like the big one, 7 million, that should be Beaufort County's contribution. So that was my rationale, but, you know, you can add this one, take that one off. And then the resultant figure, 63 million for Green Belt. And then the resultant figure, $63 million for Green Belt, got to 470.
Just have a couple of observations. I think the mayor did a fantastic job of going through those. Thank you, Mayor, I think that was very helpful. We were just kind of going through, looking at geographic distribution as well. Making notes there. Just a couple of items that Mr. Abakin just talked.
He said he'd back the item.
There are many projects that they have listed here, for A, $18, and for B, $22, improvements of $48 million, Level Road at $26 million. And I remember from our earlier meeting, I thought that he was, the town was fine with those projects being there.
I whispered to him when we came over, and he said, he's fine, those are the priorities.
You want to make a motion to amend that while he's out of the room?
I think that all this makes sense. Two concerns. One, we had a generic in there for traffic signals. We've cut out the 20 million that was, was a project that wasn't listed on here. That was just for general repairs, turn lanes and things, unincorporated. You know, whatever you run into, the road is unanticipated. And then we add in there about $2.5 million for various traffic lights, if we need to throw up something or something. So, I think that you may want to think about that, I don't have a lot of chance to do those projects as you grow, undefined ones. And then I really think you have to go back and talk about the conservation contribution, because you previously said 20 percent, this does not include 20 percent. So, I think the council really has to make that decision first, because that could necessarily affect the rest of these roads. I think if you work backwards that way, we can get, we can get out of here today. Does that make sense? What do you feel about the conservation? We currently had it at 820. The mayor's playing your head to have that review down somewhere.
63, it comes out to around 13.
13 percent. I'll let you deal with Kate's shape on that.
Kate said it looks fine.
That's an invitation.
What was your feedback that you got when you started, and for things of that?
That's a great question. You can help.
Yeah, I can help you. Thank you. My name is Peggy Henry, and I'm with Trust for Public Land. And we did, we were buzzing, go ahead and conduct a public opinion survey in Jasper County. We mostly did live calls, there are some demographics that won't respond to a live call. About grown kids, let's see, and then for them, I guess, or their cell phone, but, so some were texted. But we did ask questions about the viability to the mayor's point. Actually, there's been a tremendous amount of collective wisdom expressed here. I always say that elected officials are the real experts on the lay of the land in any community, and that's definitely evident in many of your comments, safety being an important issue that was brought up. I want to go back to something Chair, Vice Chair Clark said about the number. I think for most people, they're probably not going to get down into the weeds with that. They're just going to have this, "What can my family afford?" So, those are the kinds of questions that we did ask. So, to that question, we did, you know, we always want to provide the local government, I do almost nothing but work on ballot measures for local governments, including locally organized organization, where we're close to them, on their green belt with transportation. One of the questions that we did ask that had to do with whether or not people would want to see more or less go to conservation, because we always want to give you a step forward, a way that you can get to where you want to go. And the majority of people said that they would prefer if we made it 20 percent. 90 percent, that was 36 percent, said that they would be happy with the 20 percent. 90 percent said they'd like to see less go to conservation. 24 percent said they'd like to see more go to conservation. And 30 percent said they're not voting for it, no matter what. So, there's always that hardcore, like, "I don't care what you put in there, it's not my thing," right? But we would argue that if you're looking at sort of trying to, through your ballot language, through the program you set up, be as reflective of Jasper County values as you can. We would probably suggest you stick at that 20 percent.
I understand the thought process on obviously our roads and transportation, but flip side, I'm a huge advocate for conservation. I think we put more land in conservation, preserving natural beauty, identity, especially in rural areas. I'm glad you said that, and that's what the data showed, that state of 20 percent. We do make a bold step, do it now, and start taking action to make preservation of our, like you can't go.
Same, we need to stay at 20 percent, try to figure out if we're going to take, if we're going to do that. Our speed comes 94.
Mr. Chairman, an operational question.
Based on collecting $9.5 million last year, 20 percent savings. Now, for the 70 million, it's an average of $32 million a year, okay? So, that's a big jump. I don't want to go out with 470, but let's say that the 5 percent is the, is what we achieve. 5 percent increase in, and that number comes out to 250 million. The green space becomes 80 million or 20 percent? Or does it stay at 94? And that's, that's an important thing. You know, when we put, you know, a number or percentage, and that's a question. Exactly. What, what is the number if what we collect is less than 20 percent? Is it a percentage, or is it a whole?
Other counties we worked in, they have designated both a percentage and a number. So, each year you would spend 80 percent on transportation projects and 20 percent on your green space. Is that, I think that's correct.
Or you would bank it, yes.
I think one of the main points that I find confusing about this body in South Carolina laws is that you can put any number in the world, you're only collecting that 1 percent, right? And Chair, Vice Chair Clark mentioned this earlier. If you put a billion on there, and you're still only collecting 1 percent every 15 years. The thing that is challenging, I think, given your location, your strategic importance on the interstate, your gateway into the coast and everything else, that one large destination type shopping center is probably dramatic, 10 years, 100 times for everything, right? I would think. So, it's hard to predict, it's very hard to project what'll happen over 15.
You mean like a Costco, again?
Any, any major, you know, any major retailer.
But on the other hand, when you're talking about, let's say, passes, you start collecting this major product. If a major, major, major retail came to, that's the day, let's say. You wouldn't start collecting taxes until 2028 at best, the way it takes for these things to get ready. So, you're talking about three, four years of collecting 9.5 million instead of 32 million. So, you're still, while you're right, we have to also take into effect that anything that changes, we've got 72 acres of Margarita Road, it's all commercial. But by the time that gets developed, 15 years will be gone. So, you can't count it in until it's in. And that's, so, but we have to be realistic on what it is that we expect to collect. I feel like that's what I'm saying.
No, I was just going to ask you, are these projects cost today's dollars? Is that what they're estimated to be?
I think that's a.
So, there's no inflation factor.
That's a.
There's no inflation.
Okay, so, I should, you need to keep that in mind. So, I guess going back to the 470, you might have 20 projects. Well, as we know, I won't name specific examples, I think you exit three. You know, minus 20, you might be able to do six, or seven when they're done. So, my point is, I think you list all the projects with a estimated amount, and whatever you get done based on the progress that are done, what's left. That's what I would suggest.
And you go to 20 percent, take the 20 percent, and it's $31 million that you have to take out of the roads.
And what is the likelihood of us, we come to terms, sooner or later, that we're going to enter in and come do another 1 percent referendum after that? Because we had one before, and it went away, we've only been a thousand, or what, a year now? And then we're entering into another one, so what's the likelihood of us being a repeat doing that to kind of augment some of the?
I think, as Mike mentioned, with these projects, the likelihood of you potentially extending it would be, would be very likely. We didn't extend the earlier one because we had such a short project list. We didn't want to put all that money on the project.
So, what is, how long can we extend it, or is that just, as long as we keep extending?
Yes, sir, you can do it again through the referendum, but you don't have, it doesn't have to to the end. You can pick it up in the last few years and extend it.
Like the ordinance?
Yes, through a referendum, same thing.
Through a referendum.
You just don't let it run out.
So, it's the same, there's no difference. Except, you have, the problem is that you take it away, and you, when you take it away, you never get it back. So, it's a bonus.
If I can circle back in a little word about the 20 percent of the green space. I feel we need to keep that number in there. It puts a little confidence into the public of what we're doing on this. It's 20 percent of what we collect, we're not putting that straight dollar amount out. And you see, the percentage of people that wouldn't vote for anything, no matter what. But you look at the other two, and maybe, maybe some of these other people would look at it. It's all over the media now about protecting what we have. You know, to me, it looks like it's a good sales feature to get the public to be against this.
I agree, that's the people who have more conservation mind, that would give them more availability, you know, vote towards access, because I think everybody has the same dollars.
Mr. Chairman, what Ms. Burgess is doing is taking the mayor's list, given that, and putting the green space back to, I'm sorry, Green Belt, back to 20 percent. Meaning you'd have three, the 376 in a road project. And trying to see how we might make the 376 work. Okay. Mr. Chairman?
I think it's fair, whatever you pass, you know, passes, they decide how you can actually educate and aware, make awareness, I think. We all know this, I don't know if Dr. Beaufort County, what they're marketing. A way, educational awareness campaign, not marketing efforts. And we all know, I think we got to push the, it's 40 to 45 percent. This is paid for by the tourists and the people that are coming here and enjoying Jasper County. So, I think that's critical. So, I don't know, you know, I think those 40 and 50, whatever you decide.
Thank you, I agree on that. So, we're down to, we've got to 8 percent, 20 percent, Green Belt, we've got that, at least it's valid. And bonding, is any bonding at all, was that?
Yes, sir, thank you. That's probably your next, knowing, if you're going to 376, what do you feel comfortable doing or not doing at all? That would again be the recommendation of the committee, based on the cash flow and all that kind of thing.
So, that would be a responsibility of the committee to talk about bonding opportunities, how related they would be.
We could invite our sponsor, or.
Yeah, if we have a designated, I'm not sure, because I'm not very firm on bonding either, but I'm just saying.
Well, we plan, is that we would bring those people to the Capitol, questions about what would, would be.
That would be something that would be determined, I guess, at the meeting, which not necessarily.
That's right. The way it is worded in your draft ordinance is there's a dollar amount that you would be, if voters were inclined to favor it, you would be able to borrow not to exceed that amount in bonds, right? But you are not required to, nor do you have to take it all in one lump sum. You could take as much as you wanted, whenever you want.
Just a question, when we do the bonding on this referendum, and say, let's say, $100,000, $100 million for bonding, does that go against anything, or does that put in place that limits on other places?
No, sir, it would be, it would be general obligation, but it is referendum-approved debt, so it does not count against your 20 percent. It would just be additional debt.
So, if we wanted, if we said nothing in there about referending the bond, we have to go back and referend them at a different time?
You would.
Or can we just do it by ordinance?
You could, but then that would eat into your, your bonding capability, which we don't ever recommend, because you've used about half of your powder, and you have about half of your powder dry. So, that's the way we'd like to keep it.
I'd feel more comfortable having a number in the ordinance of the amount of bonding capability, instead of leaving it open to the committee. I think the voter would look at it more that way. It's my thought on that. I don't like leaving anything open to an amount, I think. It appears so much more physically responsible if we have a dollar. They may not like it, but at least we put it there.
That was our intent, is to make it as flexible as possible for going forward, but not obligating you to borrow your money at all, if you didn't want to.
It's an alternative, or an option for us.
It is. I think the Beaufort County ordinance, they intend to borrow right away. And they make that note in the ordinance. It's a different scenario.
Why would we bond?
You have an opportunity, and you don't have the cash flow coming in, but you have an opportunity to really maximize and blow on some grants and other partnerships. So, it makes sense. I mean, the interest you pay in the long run sounds crazy, but could actually save you money.
Just in the, in the last bond, 2016, you had $27 million, it was $27 million, but you bonded $30 million.
We were entitled to borrow for up to $30 million.
Right, so you borrowed more than?
No, actually, it was, it was the $3 million difference was the bonding. And we, and we chose not to, we just did pay go, because we just sat and banked it in. I'm terribly conservative, I prefer that, but that may not always work.
Was there a reason that you did more than bonding than, than the actual intended revenue?
No, it was just that there were 27, at that time, $27 million we were thinking about projects, but knowing that you could go to 30 was, was a safety net.
I thought that included, we were thinking 27 million plus 3 million interest on 30.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So, you would, you would borrow 27, and you have 3 million of interest, and that's where the 30 million came up. I think that's what we're thinking in 2016.
Yes, sir.
That's my memory.
And I'm very glad we did, too.
I, I think, because this is a separate referendum question, and you don't intend to use it, you don't want to do it, you want to collect the money, you want to spend it. That one, I am afraid of stager shock. Because bonds, if you don't collect everything that you want, you go out and bond it, and you spend the money, that's going to come out as taxpayers' buy. And so, I fear that big of number of a bond, well, for whatever number you want, but I fear that that might be stager shock, and that was my concern there. Again, I don't want to give these voters any reason to say no.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, could we call on Fagin? Do you have any insight or data you could share with us about that?
I would love to talk about bonds, thank you, Mr. Fuld. So, I always start when I'm talking to community groups in particular, you all are knowledgeable, but I always say it, for a local government, a bond is exactly like a mortgage is to you and I. It enables you to purchase something today that you cannot afford. But maybe, as this gentleman said, I'm sorry, it may be way more expensive in the future because of the inflationary costs. So, you're paying your. So, you're paying your, today, maybe 4% interest on your bonds, but the inflationary costs of building that road or buying that land later, maybe 10% a year, maybe who knows what in this present fiscal environment. So, it enables you to do a project today and pay for it over time. And some of those projects, like especially roads that are particularly bad shape, it could be a good idea to go ahead and fix it today, but it isn't getting any better over time, right? So, I will tell you, because we often, in South Carolina in particular, this is not required in every state. In some states, the sales tax implies that you can bond them, because it's a dedicated revenue source. But here in South Carolina, yeah, there's a separate question. The bonding question, to your point, Mayor, it always lags behind the, the sales tax question. And I think it's probably, if I have to opine, that people don't know exactly what it means, but it may also be a sticker shock. And/or, they do know what it means, and they don't want to pay the interest on it, right? Because there's, you know, that there's a fiscally conservative reason to say, like, we'll just save up and pay it when we can afford it, right? When we have the money to pay. But overall, and Beaufort Open Land Trust, CCL, Chamber folks, Realtor folks, builder folks, we all work together on these measures when everyone can agree that they're good, which in this case, I think we can. And we usually can communicate, using private dollars, vote yes on question one and two. And here's why, question two is also important. And so, to, to several of the points that we made earlier, it needs to be communicated to people. You need to be able to make the case as to why it makes sense. And I think the question about going for too much in bonding, you know, my experience with, with bond attorneys and going up to the bond agencies and those kinds of things, they tend to be more conservative than any of us, because they're making a decision on the basis of how you're going to be able to pay back these bonds. And so, they would put a really fine point on how much they'll allow Jasper County to bond at any one time. Wouldn't that be your experience and your data?
Sure, I mean, the, the test of whether we can pay for it or not would be the test of whether we can sell the bonds or not. I mean, the buyer's going to tell us whether it works or not. It's not going to be something that we usually be getting yourself in trouble.
But I think that the main point, as to is it, is it together, or does it look like too big of a number? That's a very legitimate point. I will tell you, in our, in our polling, there was solid support for the sales tax. The support for the bonding was less strong, but that was also the case in both Berkeley and Dorchester, when we worked with them two years ago, and both of them we did pass. But we communicated them together.
I mean, we understand what you just said. We understand what you say about the attorneys only allowing so much. That has to be conveyed to the public, because they're going to look and see $290 million. They're not going to understand that the bonding attorney says, no, we're not going to be able to do that. I mean, is 290 an absolute deadline? I mean, can that, can that be modified? The less it is, the more palatable it may be.
Yes, sir, it, it can be whatever you want it to be, whatever you think you're comfortable with, and we'll make it work.
Compared to other ones that you've worked on, what is a viable percentage?
That is a very fine question. I don't remember the answer to, I can look it up if you'd like me to, in terms of what the other South Carolina counties we've worked with have done. I mean, I think your point is exactly right, that if you can get away with living with a lower number, it's probably a better thing to designate.
Well, when you have a bonding, it seems like you bond, let's put it that way, $50 million. You're actually bonding $100 million, because you're using that $50 million to do projects, but you're collecting money also. So, it really benefits, and that could have to be, you're benefiting by getting these projects started real quick and still doing that money.
I'm going to see if I can find one of these, if you can give me a question on my part.
Do you know what, what's the bonding number that Beaufort County, you called?
I believe it was immediate 600, wasn't it? 600, I believe so. That was my last look. It's had some different iterations, so there's probably people that know better than I do. I wondered, while you're thinking, while he's looking that up, the other idea is that that, that bonding amount goes to both sides, right? Road projects and potential conservation projects. So, if you had a huge opportunity to purchase a property or conservation business in a large area, you could move very quickly. That's another reason to have it.
While we wait on any information, as far as the educational piece, will all the members of the committee, staff, receive that, that package, so that we're all in the same shoes of explaining, you know, the, what the hounds and lies. So, that we can talk, we can explain it, and all have the same cohesive message.
Yes, sir. What we intend to do is, is some one pagers and things like that for you, maybe a presentation. I'm going to rely heavily on some friends and partners that may or may not be in the room to help us with those materials. And keep in mind that we, as public officials, our job is to educate, and we cannot, you know, say it's a good idea, say it's a bad idea. We're supposed to be factual and talk about what the, what the plan is and the project is, and why you came to where you work. And we'll, we will prepare that for you. But there will also be some private marketing going on that we will not be involved in, and that will be targeted. So, there'll be different messages for different parts of the community. So, I'm excited about that, because we didn't have that last time.
And depending on the bond number, would those be those projects that are multi-jurisdictional, maybe influenced, that would impact a greater number of travelers through certain regions, especially those through areas where you've got unincorporated Jasper County, or it doesn't houses each other, to move traffic around faster?
It could be, Council of Lords, it could be a scenario where Beaufort County is ready to move on a project they've already done, or they've gone out, we designed, they're ready to go, and they want us to pull you up immediately with the money, and so we have to do that. Where it could be a situation where they're ready to go, and we partner with them, and we just agree to contribute X for the project, and we just come check, figure out that they don't have to borrow money. So, there are just so many different ways it could work. But yes, sir, that is a possibility.
There's also, I have the, so, and, you know, keep in mind that my own impression, all our partners are denying, but, you know, Berkeley County had its big glut of growth, period, period bad rate. But they, I think they're still growing fast, but they are collecting over seven years, 587 million, and they are bonding, giving themselves offer of ratization upon, they're both receives of offer of ratization upon, up to 89 million, which is 15% of the total. I can bet that Dorchester is higher. They don't have as high a sales tax revenues, and they did do 15 years, so give me a moment, I'll look that up, too. And then, you know, there's also, I mean, obviously, you can bond under educational sales taxes, you can bond under capital profits taxes and so on. So, it's probably all over the board, and the Department of Revenue probably has that somewhere in their archives.
Did I do the math right? That'd be 70 million for us, that would, in case?
15%?
Yes. 650, and their total is how much? 650.
650 out of 9.
50 million, I just missed it. We asked the guys who make all the money off the mountain.
650 out of 9, 50 is 68.4.
So, do we need to have a percentage on the cost of the bonding, or is it a referendum?
I haven't ever seen a percentage on the bonds, but, but, I mean, I was wondering, David, as to whether they do that.
Would it be a number?
It's a number, generally, it's a number.
How do they arrive at that number? Is it based on, what, basically, 15% or 89%?
I honestly, no. I suspect it's, it's working out which projects they want to do urgently before they have revenues in the door, would be my guess.
That was my suggestion, Mr. Chairman. It's to take the top priority projects, and, um, our general arguments for a party, the excellence for the region. We were, you know, take the most urgent projects, take 20% for green space, and whatever that adds up to be, that'd be the bond. So, if we, those top priorities, the ones you want to push to the public, you want to get those going right away? Yeah, well, you know, authorize it, because that's how I came up with the numbers. But, you know, so, I like the idea of a number that's based on something. Rather than a percentage, you know, special sub whole, you know, which is queer. And you could, you could, if you're watching, you could explain that, you know, you're talking to people. This is how we came up with the number. That's something people would understand. That was, that was, that was 131 million. I mean, it's a number based on one something, there's a rationale for the number.
137.
Just 137.
137, is it?
Yeah.
137 is less than half of the 2 million, so it would be there.
And it's not a number that...
There are industries that need to be built, and there are prices, so it's not something that...
Good, it's got one out. Can you go up? There's some new projects you need to do.
Yeah.
Actually, the priority...
That's why prioritizing is important, and so, every party, this county. Okay, this was, this is your most important thing, that's what you get done first. Why could you do that?
And Trump said, like, 290, 150, again, all the money. I'm going to take, like, that might be more powerful, like, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80.
For the road, we would do everything all at once, but we can't, so we have to prioritize, if you're, so everybody's in county fixtures, and piece of that pie.
Okay, it looks like Dorchester bonded 400 out of 735, which is 54%. I don't think there's a magic number.
So, the bonding number was?
One joke's up.
137?
137.
That's what we sent back there. I...
I like 120.
I like 150.
150 gives a little bit of a leeway.
How many times have you broke? Yeah, but they, what you have to do, priority, because that's what, going back to what the mayor said, is you have to have, the number of dollars has to match the program. So, if you do 150, then we have to make sure we know the, the priority is to make up on 150.
That leaves a little bit of contingency in case goods and services go well.
And we're not, and I, according to the way it sounds, we're not going to really think about this unless it needs to be done. We don't, it's something that we have to do just to say, we can do it.
Yes, sir, it's nice to have the ability.
Right, the ability, nice to do it. So, that has to be sold.
Is everybody sold on 150? Give me, 150, is that a general consensus?
I'm fine with that.
What say you, Mr. Zambord? He's in. He's in.
That's why I have you seated, there's a case out of this.
Okay, so, so far, you're moving right through. You've got the 4th of the year, 15-year term, you've got the 80-20 split, 376 and 94.
Under the board.
And now, you're at the bond of 150. You've tackled the committee, you've added the school district, you've made it a designate, correct? Now, we're down to the project. Are we missing something? Okay. Can we have a suggestion?
Okay, so, if we take the, if we keep the 94,000, the 20%, and we have to take the project off, we can't reduce it by 1%. There's a $5 million project for US 17 Mackey Point, grade intersection. Take that off, that leaves $500,000 to add back to another project. You can do that to US 278, you know, any of the 2 million, or really any of them. But you can do it to the 321, 336 intersection, any reconstruction, just...
500,000?
500,000 somewhere.
No. That's 5 million, not a lot.
No, you take the 5 million off.
Right.
That leaves you with 4 million, 469,500, if you have the 94 in there. And you're going, trying to get to 407. So, there's only 500,000 left.
Well, if you take, you subtract 3 from 94, you get 31 million. So, you have to find 31 million to take off.
So, I have the list that, well, my list is setting up, unless I left something out. I might have to go back to the number. So, I've got the 37 million, I've got the 15 million for 50, the 34, 24 million for the 17 Wising, 72 million for the 315, there's 5, and then the 48, the 20, uh, I guess Glover Road, is Glover Road this off? I left Glover Road, Glover Road and the Mackey Point. So, that's the 31 million. So, that, if you want to...
If you're going from the, like, recommended list, would you go down, would you take off the...
Yes, so, taking off 31 million to Glover Road is 26 million. And Mackey Point was 5 million. So, that's the 31 million, actually leaves 500,000 to put somewhere else.
That's, that's the 31 million that we have in fact to be...
Yes.
Okay, I got it. Now, my question...
That's always the highest priority.
My question is Glover Road and Mackey Road, by taking them off the list, will we lose voters? Are they important to those areas?
I know that the Glover is important to the town.
Glover's important to the town of Brusel?
Yes, sir.
And that's the full length of Glover from 462 back to Bee's Creek? Just 8, just in 8 portions?
Yeah, I would be concerned about that, because as you recall from the, the lines of 2016, Richland voted, Richland voted down in 2016. Well, you probably remember that. Richland voted against the 2016 referendum. So, if we take out a major project, lots of them, you know, we're probably losing votes. That's what we're...
So, Glover Road, it was actually pavement improvement and dirt road improvement? Yes, it included dirt road improvement, because the map that I created way back when I showed it, it came all the way over to 462, and depending upon how it was lined up, you could actually create a new gateway into the town of Richland by lining up with the intersection of Snake Road. And therefore, people would not have to do the zigzag of going on 462, coming up the 336, and coming into Richland. Because that community around the 462, 336 intersection, this is, is a historical community. So, as traffic keeps growing and people keep using that corridor, how are you going to be able to make more improvements there than are what there today, exist today?
So, you get, the, the Beaufort crowd going to Richland would go that way and would not go through Old House?
Yes. And then, also coming into, into the town of Richland, then coming in on 336, you still have to do a zigzag to get back to some of the main corridors. This actually pulls you directly off of 17, 278 corridor, straight across with that improvement.
It sounds like an important project we need to work around, don't you think?
So, Kim, what else could we add? What about Exit 18 and 22? That would be under the widening. Didn't they do one, with the widening, press the widening, they took over a road that we were going to fund or something?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, we won't know about that for another, probably six months, but, yes, sir. We, we have Exit 21 scheduled for 2016. We have six and a half million sitting there waiting to see how much the OT is going to pick up.
Could we, could we take the Exit 18, just make one of those, and cut that in half?
So, so both of those, assuming... So, so both of those assumed on the list that DOT was doing the interchange, and this was actually some improvements on either side of that. I can't remember, I think both of them were skewed coming off of the interchange, coming back into the main corridor of seventeen.
Sort of reorientation, I think.
Outside of potentially what DOT may do. But as Andy stated, we won't really know what they're going to do until they truly start developing more defined plans.
Again, those two, those three projects are really, really important.
So there's US two, US seventeen widening, three fifteen to one seventy, that's twenty-four million.
That's the two lanes we talked about previously, is that right?
You could take that and add an additional. One point five or two million, but it's only. There's a two million dollar project, this is the two seventy-eight, six fifty-two intersection improvement. And I think that's it really. We could add five hundred thousand, that's some of the facilities we could add to the project, but if we have to keep the project amounts intact and just remove projects, we're only at, we're limited to just a few by handful, and, or less than a handful.
But that is, um, LAX has authorized a traffic study that deals with the entire, you have one hundred and two million dollars between forty-six, one seventy, three fifteen and the widening, which is two to one hundred and two million dollars. It's all contingent upon LAX study, and that's what back here. They may come back with something totally different. So until we know that, we couldn't really put any number in there to make it, you know, you give any number to it and give the, you know, green space with the desire and just reduce between the thirty and the seventy-two. Leave Glover twenty-six million, but take twenty-six million out of those two buckets.
Mr. Mayor, can you tell me which buckets again?
The, you have twenty, um, you have forty-six, one seventy, three fifteen improvements, thirty million, and you have three fifteen widening, so the same road is another seventy-two million.
And your proposal is to just shave those down, make a contribution, whatever it ends up being?
It is, because at this point, it's a, until that traffic study comes back, it could be any number, it could be twice this. So, you know, that's something we'll deal with later down the road, based on LAX, and perhaps that's, that's where loco comes in, because that's a LAX study, money can be gotten in there. That's, that's just one suggestion.
I think that's a great suggestion because, and it's also enabled because it's on your list, if you had to shift running around later, it's already there.
It's, it's enabled, it's on the list, Green Space is taken care of, everybody's happy.
All right, let's be sure we're talking about the same one. South Carolina three fifteen widening from South Carolina one seventy to South Carolina forty-six intersection to US seventeen, correct?
The, um.
Well, if, if, are you looking at the spreadsheet? I mean, yeah, well, it started off, I took these from what, that seventy-two billion?
This one.
That's the seventy-two billion on there. Maybe it's too much.
Yeah. It's a seventy-two million dollar item, it'd be on page five. Yeah, top of page five.
It's on, um, the seventy-two million is on page of the original, it was on page four. It says, SC three fifteen widening from SC one seventy, SC forty-six intersection to US seventeen.
So that was the one that was not given through. So that was a four lane to five lane widening for the front of the intersection.
Uh, that, incidentally, that went to staff. The client probably, it was very far down the list as far as priority.
So would you put a lower number to it?
To reduce to one hundred thirty-one. Do you want to leave the next point on there?
I think that would be helpful. Personally, from a political viewpoint of getting voters to vote for it, it sounds like Mackey's point should be on there.
We got the same. So you're taking all of it out of that one project, all the E's? And then we can take a look at this list, we can review it, we can print it out, if everybody is comfortable with it. Then I think we may, Mr. Chairman, have covered all of the ground today.
So can I just confirm, we're taking seventy-two, we're taking away thirty-one million from the seventy-two?
Is that what it is, thirty-one million?
It's, it's thirty million five hundred thousand.
Thirty, thirty million five hundred thousand.
Can I redistribute this revised project list for the numbers?
Uh, I would, yes, sir, I was going to, Kim, do you think we could print your spreadsheet?
Today, yes.
And then we'll all go, we're here today. Let's do that. Can we do that, please?
Yeah.
And then we'll all be good with that, so we're all on the same page, and then we will incorporate all of your changes into the ordinance for the second reading. So we'll take a little time and, we said, I'm going to print that out. I'm going to do that.
So, Eddie, are you, why don't you give it to him?
I have, I have, thank you. We appreciate you.
I have you and Katie on your side.
I'm married.
I've been married for four years, I don't want to back off.
Oh, my God. Excellent. I would have never been so cool to sit at the table. I love it.
Well, she wouldn't maybe not have that much.
No, no, I'm sorry. Well, you didn't want me at the table, I had a fiery conversation preceding this meeting.
Oh, no, no, good. We don't want to hear you talk about it.
Yeah, Marcus, sitting nicely here, even knows.
Eye lock on the mayor.
Well, I looked over a couple of times and see seven, there are any dots coming out of the road.
But I do, I do think it's the right number because it does provide that everyone's nerve, why they're in town, even in perspective, they're curious to see.
Kim, you want to go through them?
Yes, very quickly. The first column that says, as presented, is actually what's in the ordinance right now. The middle column is what Mr. Williams had suggested, and then the third column where it says mayor revise is what everyone just came to consensus with today.
Can we read off the revised?
Yes.
Projects.
Yes, Argent Boulevard, maybe seven million. US quarter, phase, uh, two seventy-eight quarter, phase one, fifteen million, US two seventy-eight quarter, phase two, fifty million. South Carolina forty-six, SC one seventy, SC three fifteen, thirty million. US seventeen, US three twenty-one, four million. The US seventeen widening from three fifteen to one seventy is twenty-four million. Then the South Carolina three fifteen widening from one seventy, SC forty-six, intersection to US seventeen, that has been.